Everything gets so silent. And ladies and gentlemen, welcome my call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in Business Meeting, March 17, 2016. I'll ask Mr. Crupp, our county administrator, to do the roll.
Well, good evening, commissioners. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Yes.
Yeah, most of us have green on, Martha.
I don't have green, sorry. Oh, well.
Didn't read the memo.
Oh, look, Terry's gonna bring you something up here, Martha, to save you.
I'm a trace. All right, great.
All right. Well, of course, we are joined here with, from County Council, Mr. Stephen Madcor. And I want to point out that Stephen and I are both wearing lightly striped green shirts.
You've got the memo, huh?
Yes, yeah. We coordinated this morning, so.
What's, what color is that?
Uh, this is green. It's a very nice, light green.
It's green.
Yeah. And, of course, to my left, Mary Rathke, clerk of the board, is here this evening. I'll start with the roll. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Hey, would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim's giving me a wink, 'cause usually when I have any kind of crowd, I tell people there's no comma after nation, and you guys did it perfectly. Thank you for that.
Well-trained.
All right, I'll announce the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. And, as already introduced, but I'd like to introduce Paul Reynolds, our commissioner, who represents said housing. So, Mr. Crupp?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. The first item is a public hearing on the proposed 2016-2017 Housing Authority of Clackamas County Annual Plan, and our Housing Authority Director, Mr. Chuck Robbins, is here to give the report.
Don't fall out of my seat. Well, good evening, Commissioners Chair. Don, Mary, always good to see you. I'm Chuck Robbins, Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And this is the yearly meeting where we talk about the Housing Authority's annual plan. Bear with me, this is a HUD requirement. They have a number of things they want me to hit, so I've got a little bit of a script here that I will read through, and then we'll get to the important stuff. First of all, there's three elements to this public hearing. We're gonna have a review of last year's performance of the Section 8 Public Housing and Capital Grants Program. We'll also have an opportunity for any citizens to testify on the plan or the county's public housing needs and performance. I want to say that the plan, which is in your packet, was prepared and then submitted and reviewed and approved by the Resident Advisory Board. This is a board of Section 8 and public housing residents that have volunteered their time to kind of oversee what's going on at the Housing Authority. So that meeting was held on January 14, and the plan's also been out for public comment between January 23 and March 8. During that time, we received one comment. That comment had to do with, first of all, it was a question on whether or not we had instituted the streamlined compliance information that HUD had included in the notice, which we had. And there was also a request as to whether or not we had made changes in our payment standards, which we also had. So we responded to both. I want to say that the board does not need to take any action today. So this is just an opportunity to go over the plan, take public comment. Our goal is to take any comments that we receive, and we will then modify the plan as needed, and then we will resubmit for approval in a special meeting of the Housing Authority Board scheduled for March 31. Our goal is to get this in by April 7 with an effective date of July 1. So that kind of gets us there. So let me just talk a little bit about what's going on, and particularly for those in the audience, a little bit, the Housing Authority. We have two big programs, Section 8 vouchers. We have about 1,600 vouchers, which is about $11.7 million worth of payments that goes out into the community. HUD pays us to administer them, and glad to say that we got about a 3% bump in our administrative fee, which helps, but that's still about 80% less, or 80% of what it actually costs to run the program. We also have public housing. We have about 545 public housing units, which generate about $1.4 million annually in rent. So that goes back into the program. And also got a little bit of a bump in the operating budget for that program, but we're still about 94% of what it actually costs. Capital funds, this is the money that HUD gives us to maintain our public housing units. We got a little bit of a bump on this, which is nice, because over the last four or five years, we've been reduced by about 50%, so we're sitting at about $866,000. So, that, you know, that's the Housing Authority. I want to hit on a couple successes, 'cause there has been some good things that have happened at the Housing Authority. We went through some lean times. The first one I want to mention is the fair market rents. Fair market rents are the rents set by HUD that are the maximum amount that any of our clients, residents, can be paid. And what's happened between 2012, 2015, fair market rents went up by 1% a year. During that same time, market rents went up 33%. 2016, HUD recognized that they were behind and gave us a bump of about 6%, which is still low. So the Housing Authority of Clackamas County, along with three other housing authorities in the region, contracted to have a fair market rent study done. That study was prepared and submitted to HUD, and they approved a 28% increase in our fair market rents. Now, that's a bit of a two-edged sword, 'cause, you know, we get more money, or they increase the rents, which mean that we spend more money, which means we help less people. But HUD also gave us an additional $1 million to be used in Section 8. So, you know, I mean, I think we really came out good on that one. So another, another success is VASH. These are the veteran vouchers that we receive. Clackamas County was the only county to lease up 100% of their original VASH vouchers. That was 25. We're now at 46, and we've got 43 of those already leased up with three out looking. So, you know, the, the bad news is that, you know, that's all we have, and we need more. And I think that if we had that, you know, we would have, we would still be at 100%, because we've just got a great system in place for that. We have one project under construction, Town Center Greens. We've talked about that before. I just want to say 60 units of alcohol and drug-free housing out in Clackamas. That project is well on schedule and should be completed by August of 2016. One thing I did would like to share, and I haven't talked about this before, you know, we always talk about the units that we have and the clients that we, you know, that are trying to find housing, but what happens with the residents that are there? And how do we help them? We have a program called Family Self-Sufficiency. It's a program from HUD, and it allows us to assist Section 8 clients by allowing them to realize increases in their salary while at the same time not negatively impacting their rent. 'Cause what ends up happening is you pay a certain, you know, well, the voucher will pay a certain amount, as your rent goes up, we pay less and less. So there's, you know, and at some point, you know, people are saying, "Well, I'm gonna lose my housing if I don't, if I continue to work." So what we try to do is we set up an escrow account for these individuals. As their, as their salary increases and they're paying more of their salary toward the rent, we match that, put that into an escrow account. And families that are in these programs sign up for five years, and when they're all done and they've graduated, they, on average, there's about $10,000 of money that is in there, and it can be used for education, it can be used for the purchase of a new car, it can be used for purchase of a house. And I've got one example. We had a, a woman, three children, was a victim of domestic violence, and because of the recession, found herself homeless and received a voucher from the Housing Authority. She got into this Family Self-Sufficiency program, and immediately, through a temp agency, got a job working for a real estate agent. And her income started to grow. And as it grew, we put money into her escrow account. She did so well that the owner of the agency paid to, paid for her training and licensure to become a full-service insurance agent. And as a result, her income rose even higher, so that when, at the end of five years, not only did she no longer need public housing, but had over $32,000 in her escrow account, which we then used to put a down payment on a house. So, I mean, there's a success story, and there's, there's, you know, and we've got quite a few of those out there. I think typically, we have about 99 families enrolled. And we've had, I think, just last year, we had 11 that graduated, and most of them, when they graduate, actually leave public, or Section 8. So, those are the, those are the successes, a little bit of the challenges. We need more affordable housing, everybody knows that. Though we, I do think that there's a little bit of a thawing in the vacancy rate. I think last year was about 1% vacancy rate for affordable housing. It's now a little bit more than 1, but less than 2. It's going in the right direction, but it's not moving very quickly. As I mentioned, we need more VASH vouchers, and so that's something that the Housing Authority is kind of pursuing. There are quite a few housing authorities out there that have not used all of their VASH vouchers. So we're trying to put in a request to have those reallocated to us. So with that, that's kind of the challenges and the successes. When you look at the, the plan, there's really only a couple things that I wanted to point out. In the Section 8 Administrative Plan and Attachment A, three things to highlight is we require a 50% or $50 minimum rent for anybody in our program, and we're removing that for veterans, just because we're finding that that is, you know, they're probably the lowest of the low that we're dealing with right now, and they're having a hard time just coming up with that $50. We've also added a veterans' preference. What that means is that if you're a veteran, you can jump to the top of the line, and we will help you. We don't do too many preferences, but this is one that we felt real strongly about, and particularly if we're gonna try to end veteran homeless, this is, you know, what the Housing Authority can do. We've also added a preference for veterans with VASH vouchers. Right now, when you get a VASH voucher, you get, there is money associated with services for that. And so, once you get a VASH voucher, you can stay on that VASH voucher forever, as long as you own, as long as you continue to meet the income guidelines. But if you don't need the services, it feels like a loss. So we've set up a preference, so that if you're on, you have a VASH voucher, you've reached the point where you don't need the services and you're stable, but you still will, you know, for whatever reason, unable to work or can't work enough to, you know, live, make enough money to live in an affordable unit, we will transfer you over to a Section 8 voucher, which then allows us to reissue that VASH voucher to a veteran that needs the services. So those are a couple things in Section 8. In public housing, we've increased our late fees from $25 to $50, where we're hoping that that will be enough of an incentive to get people to pay their bills on time. We've also increased our maintenance fee. If you damage your unit, so it's not through just normal wear and tear, maintenance has to come out, you're charged for their time. And this fee had not been set for, you know, hadn't been changed for years, so it went from $23 an hour to $40 an hour, which covers, you know, salary overhead and fringes. And then the big one in there is we've updated our lease. The lease in public housing had not been updated in a number of years, and it was almost, it almost took a legal degree to understand, so we simplified it. So with that, that kind of takes me through everything. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on the presenter so far?
I have just one, just curious on the Town Center Greens. How much land is that, that footprint?
You know, I don't know for sure, but it's, it's in that four to five acre range.
And how many units on that?
It's 60 units with the ability to build an additional 18 behind.
Okay, so four to five.
Something like that, yeah. And it's probably closer to four, but I can get the exact number to you.
It should be noted that health housing and human services is one of our huge departments. But the better part of that is that it's mainly funded by the feds and the state. We, I shouldn't say that, but we contribute around $8 million a year out of the County General Fund, but I think their budget is, I can't even remember, but it's well over 100.
Oh, yeah, closer to 2, I think, almost.
Closer to 200 million. So they get a lot of great things done out there, and they touch very vulnerable citizens, including, of course, mentally challenged people, developmentally disabled, the infirm. They touch a lot of different people who need. So what I'm gonna do now is open a public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. I don't have any cards. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and announce that there is no board action, as was said earlier. This item will come back before the board for adoption at the March 31, 2016 Business Meeting. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Robbins. And now we'll have the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
Okay, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda, in the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the third quarter of fiscal year 2016. Just one, one item. Is it, wait a minute.
That's it. Gracious.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Maybe I'm confused. It says third quarter of 2016. That isn't here yet. Am I confused?
Good point.
Yeah, I would call that a typo.
Scrivener's error.
Yeah, yeah.
The fancy word to say.
It should say first quarter of fiscal year 2016.
Thank you.
So that correction will be made, right? So we're assuming that that's what we'll be voting on, too, right?
So the fiscal year is different for the Housing Authority than it is for our, right?
Well, it's every quarter.
Because our fiscal year, we're in the third, fourth, we're in the fourth quarter of this fiscal year. So this history would have been the third quarter if it's the same fiscal year, so.
No, but it's not 2016. It would be 2015 if it was third quarter.
I believe we're third quarter of 2015-16 program year, and I think that that's.
It's, the title is correct on the, on the consent agenda. If you read the background, what we're talking about doing here is the approval to write off uncollectible rent, late charges, and maintenance expenses for the third quarter of fiscal year 2016, January 1, 2016, through March 31, 2016.
Just, it'd be nice to have it on that green thing we're just looking at, that's all I'm saying.
Fiscal year 2015-16.
And clearly, I need to figure this out myself.
All right, so now, I think we've got it right here, so I'll ask for the motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority, oops, excuse me.
Yeah. How many times we got a sloppy? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Reynolds with the motion. Commissioner Bernard with the second further discussion. All right, we'll do the poll.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 6-0. I'll announce that the board will adjourn as the Housing Authority and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Appreciate you coming tonight. And now it's time for citizens' communication. I'll call you up in twos. Anita Ensley and Regina McCartney. Either one of you can go first. I saw you deciding that right there, yeah.
We're a little nervous.
Can you move that microphone kind of a little closer to you?
Is that better?
That's great, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to ask you to consider the implications. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Tell us your name.
Regina McCartney.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here to ask you to consider the implications of closing the Oak Lodge Library. The majority of the residents in the immediate area are, to say the least, financially unstable. So while you may not realize the resources this library provides, I assure you, families with no budget do appreciate and utilize one or more of the program's services, programs and services, excuse me. Speaking from experience, I have found it invaluable having the ability to use the Internet and print a whole host of things, from court documents to homework, and being able to educate myself, so that I can become more self-sufficient in hard times. Meanwhile, entertaining my children with books and videos and CDs has been a savior. I couldn't have done it without the Oak Lodge Library. Even during the day when my son is in school, I take my daughter to socialize at the reading groups. As we all know, it's very important for children to learn at a young age about literacy, and the libraries like Oak Lodge give a sense of fun to the learning, to learning, so kids can appreciate it more. This is why I feel very passionately that the children will be the first to suffer the loss of these resources, especially in the summer, which is coming soon, when education is at a standstill. Taking away the family's ability to have extracurricular input would be detrimental to their education. So I think that the rest of the community also has an issue simply affording to travel to, say, the Letting Library, or, if I'm saying that correctly, I don't know, or the Gladstone Library. I understand there's logistical needs for the county, and I see that you might be looking to sway the responsibility to the individual cities. So I implore you to make the transition without interrupting the library's hours, especially by punishing the people who use it. So, thank you for your time, and please do the right thing for our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're up.
Hi, my name's Anita Ensley, and I'm a lifelong Clackamas resident. I'm concerned that the closing of the Oak Grove Library and its consolidation with the Gladstone Library will have a negative impact on the 38,000 people that it now serves, not to mention the extra 12,000 people from the Gladstone area. The Oak Lodge Library serves an area with three grade schools, two high schools, numerous daycare centers, and many large and small retirement homes. We have many apartment complexes housing mostly middle and low-income families. The library has many programs that closing will be eliminated for our neighborhood. Goodwill and WorkSource put on programs for helping low-income people in our neighborhood write resumes so they can secure jobs. Mothers with young children benefit from Storytime, crafts, and music program. Most of those do not have the financial resources to utilize public transportation to go far from home. Besides Storytime and books, there are also free entertainment in the form of movies, CDs, and cultural passes. Many of the elderly in our community also do not have transportation and are able to walk to the library. They enjoy crafts, genealogy classes, newspapers, and magazines besides social time. For some, the library provides heat and cooling when there may not be some elsewhere. The mentally ill in our community have a welcoming place to come. It might just be a hello or a smile from a librarian. Teens who may be unable to study at home, possibly due to a noisy or crowded apartment, can come to find a quiet, comfortable place to do homework. They also have the use of a computer and internet net that may not be provided at home. The summer reading program last year had 592 kids sign up, with 366 who completed the program. In the five-to-10-year-old group, 320 finished, finished this session. In the zero-to-four group, where mothers read to their children, 122 finished. And the 18, 11-to-18 group had 150 finishers. All groups are important, but the five-to-10-year-olds are the ones who might be most impacted by not having the program available. In all, about 8,500 people walk through the library doors each month. That's almost 400 a day. There is a library serving Milwaukee and one serving Gladstone. Oak Lodge Library is in the middle. It is a small library for the 38,000 people who live here. Gladstone's library is also small and serves 12,000 people. From what I understand, the library will not be enlarged if it is consolidated. I don't know how it will be able to serve the 5,000 people that it will have to serve. We in the Oak Lodge Library District are told, not asked, as in a vote.
Go ahead.
That we will need to fund a new, more distant library that will be inaccessible to a very large share of those in our community who really need it. My family, children, and grandchildren have taken part in Storytime through the years. We have done classes, enjoyed music programs, and enjoyed a multitude of books and travelogue videos that have come home. We have good memories at the library. It is our neighborhood, it's our community. We'd like to try and keep it there. Thank you.
Now, you both did quite well. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I would say that without question, the library is not closing this summer. It will be sometime before we even have a decision what we're gonna do, and it'll be sometime, if somebody decides to build a library, wherever it is, for that library to be built and for it to be moved. So it will be a long time, and we're so far from making that decision, that I'm sure we'll hear back from you, you know, sometime in the future.
Yay.
Probably several summers, because it takes time for this construction stuff, and there's approvals. They don't even have the drawings for it yet, so, yeah, it'll be a while. Thank you very much.
Thanks for hearing us.
Les Poole and Jim Knapp, please. I see you're both within the spirit. You got green on, right? Nod.
Green jeans.
Green jeans?
Yeah, those are green jeans.
Knapp has them on, too.
Good to see Mr. Knapp here. Les Poole, 20 years in Oak Grove and three years in Gladstone. I met Mary Ann and a number of other people when they were opposed to the first Gladstone Library. And I told Mary Ann at the time, it was in the summer of 2011, I said, "This is gonna go on for years. A lot of people in Oak Grove didn't read the ballot language. This is just not gonna work out well." But we passed a ballot. We voted, folks. If you didn't know what was going on, it's 'cause you didn't read it, and I hope no one's offended by that. It's pretty clear that they voted to have libraries only in cities, so here we are in this conundrum, and there's probably a way to get a library in Oak Grove that's run as a satellite by Gladstone or something. Who knows? But this, this is a real gut-wrenching thing for the community, it really is. And I live in Gladstone now. I want to assure everyone that the first location was so problematic and so expensive and unsafe for the kids. They would have been expected to get there on Oakfield Road. Well, when you're at Jennings Avenue and Oakfield, the streetlights suddenly disappear. It's, it's not a good place up there that was planned on Webster, and now they're doing one that actually is where a bus stops. And, and at this point, I don't know how, how it's gonna go. And the commissioners are right, it's a long ways away from being completed. So I know you're gonna hear more about it, and hopefully we can work something out. Couple other quick things. One is, I was in last week, and, and I... One is, I was in last week, and, and I asked about how our citizen vote on advisory vote came and went from the ballot language. And, and that was a troubling situation, because in the end, it worked out. We've got something on the, that's going out. I'm, I'm pleased to be able to share that, I really am. And the county has come up with more money to road, for road repair. The base budget has more money in it. And so now, when you ask, you've proven to us that you've dug deep and come up with some, some money. And, you know, again, that's, that's been an issue that's drug on, and it's been awkward for a lot of folks, and, and hopefully we can get something through. Finally, you may noticed in the paper and in the news that East Moreland has gotten the okay to enlarge their lot sizes just a little bit. Actually, upzone the neighborhood so that the density that's been imposed is, is, is restrained somewhat. And, and that's the type of thing I think we need to do in Clackamas County. We got a lot of people moving here, we can't get rid of Metro, and I'm not, not interested in getting rid of planning. But we certainly need to think about the density that's being imposed on us, because it's not working, and it is affecting housing prices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, or Smith, sorry.
Thank you. You know, there's been a lot of talk about the intent of creating these library districts, and I just want to say one thing that we can get straight on this is, there may have been a ballot language to ensure that cities have libraries, but there was nothing in that ballot language that said Oak Grove would get something taken away. And that may have been a mistake from the writers, maybe they didn't think about it. So just keep that in mind as we go forward. I think this board reserves the right to fix a mistake. And so we may end up with two libraries if, if the citizens can't get together. And the citizens do need to get together, because anybody with any reasonable amount of monocom will realize that we're not gonna shut down a library that serves 8,500 people a day, I mean, a month, or 450 a day. It's just not in the cards. So I would implore those people in Gladstone and Oak Grove to get together to come to a reasonable solution. I will say one thing, again, I come, I live in the country, I live in South County. The closest library to me is five miles. But somehow we managed to get there. And you folks are talking about a distance that's quite about half that distance, if you would pencil it out. And you have bus service available. We didn't have bus service. You know, if a neighbor's going, we carpool, or we go to the library when we went to town to get groceries, but we made, we made it work. So I would implore the people out there who are testifying on this issue to make it work, because if you don't, then we'll have to make the decision. Oh, no! Thank you.
Commissioner Savis?
I just wanted to say, Les, I'll get you a copy, make sure you get a copy of that ballot language, but someone read that to say that absent that passing, the language there somewhat suggests that the libraries would remain open. So it's actually reads contrary to perhaps what you may be led to believe, so... And I think Tudy's kind of speaking to that a little bit herself. So I'm looking forward to that process, and I think the other issue obviously is the size of the facility. We're a growing area somewhat. I know we're somewhat built out, but I think a little bit of infill is likely, and if that's the case, we need to plan for adequate-sized library. So whether it's a joint one, or whether it is ultimately a second satellite library ran by another city, I, I think it's gotta be the right size.
Well, I think we're getting our skis way in front, talking about satellite libraries, and we have hopefully some great negotiations going on right now with the Incorporated and Gladstone, because so far, this board has supported that there would be a library in Gladstone. Until those negotiations and meeting of the minds occur, we're a little premature by talking about whether there will or will not be a satellite library run by whomever, because we can't command that of anybody, by the way. Thank you. Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, commissioners. Glad to be here tonight. My concern is livability. And first of all, I'd like to give a big applause to the Jennings Lodge CPO for their work on the ten-city down there in Jennings Lodge, the 10,000-square-foot lots they want to put through, and the work they've done. They've worked diligently to keep the densities in a livable neighborhood, and I think it's wonderful. Also about the library, the work that's been done by our citizens in that area, standing up and really a good patriotic and civil duties that they are performing. My big concern today is I was called by Mr. Savis about the five components of the McGoughlin area plan. And I understand there was a vote Tuesday, three to two. I guess Jim Bernard and Martha and Paul voted to look at the five components of the... And again, I'm really unclear, because I haven't sat down and looked at the video yet, which I should have observed a little closer. But it was a major concern of mine this weekend, and I ran into a land speculator on Park Avenue trying to buy property for the, to sound like me, to the densification of the light rail area. I know the former board was in bed with Metro, trying to make the Metro plan work for the light rail and densification. And what I saw there was a lot of problems coming in, and we know the problems that the light rails brought. Yes, the light rail's a nice transportation system, but it could have been done a lot different. There's a lot of talk about money in Clackamas County, and this document here that I was given, the people that worked on this did a great job of the vision of what McGoughlin should look like. Lot of good points in there. Livability is one of them. If you look through here, and there's the livability study of what it should be done. The problem comes in is, shouldn't developers look at this and put their money forth? I'm, I'm really concerned of giving a lot of public money to a lot of private businesses there, whether it be apartment complexes, section eight apartments that this man over here talked about earlier. Does, does the county want to get in bed with the developers like they have done in urban renewal districts like Town Center? That is a classic example of what's gone on at the Clackamas Town Center. We're paying on your bills, whether you live in Clackamas Town Center or not, we're still paying it throughout the county. And it kind of, we need to take some understanding. We didn't, as a businessman, we need to look at efficiencies and how we're spending our public money. I know a lot of people, and stay this statement, I've been on public board for 19 years, and they say, "It's just public money, we'll negotiate afterwards." Well, that's not the direction that this county should move in direction. I understand it's pass-through money from the federal government for a lot of these housing, and, and our vets, we should take care of 100%. And, and people that are down and under. I feel just terrible, and if, if there's a way that we can focus our attention on our, what our real problems are, and we talk about our infrastructure failing, and, and I don't want to ramble on about what we need to fix and where we need to put our money. But we need to really concentrate and see what people's motives of the area down by Park Avenue and the development of that area and the big overlay that was talked about many months, months ago. So, again, as you're my representatives, I know that Paul is concerned, because he does live in that area. Most of you live outside of that area, and again, I just don't want to take the attitude that says, "By God, I, it's just public money, we need to spend it." Thank you very much.
Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I just wanna just explain a little bit farther what I was at the Jennings Lodge hearing this morning. And before the meeting started, someone approached me and said that Jim had said something at an Oak Lodge Water Board meeting at about... So apparently there was some confusion, and so I called him. He came over to the house, I gave him a copy of this, and I was able to point out at the very top page of number four is the last guiding principle, or one of the guiding principles, which says, which reads, "Preserve, protect, and enhance the current residential neighborhoods while maintaining current densities." And that's, I think that's really what at least took place at the ERC, the Jennings Lodge thing, was when they wanted to upzone that somewhat at a higher density. So the hearing today was about a lower-density one, but still kind of took out a lot of trees and assets there. So there's a lot of great stuff in this, in these guiding principles, and I'm really proud of the work that a lot of the community did in 2009 and 10 when this got, was completed, and I just want to thank the commissioners for supporting that on, on Tuesday. So I think if, as we go, move forward, if you read, I encourage folks to read this entire document and look at those guiding principles. It establishes a framework for preserving our area and, and growing the area, but growing it in a way that preserves those assets and keeps our community solid and somewhat galvanized, so that's our hope.
I talked to, with Mike McAllister, our planner, head planner, and about the Park Avenue station area. You know, because a lot of people have a vision for that area. But, you know, I agree with you that the vision should be realized based on those who want to develop that property. And they should initiate it, they should certainly help pay for the planning. But, you know, usually that's done by assemblage, where somebody goes around and says, "I'll take this little parcel, that kind of big one, put this all together," and then potentially do it, always subject to an approval from the county. But Mike says that nobody has approached him about the redevelopment of that area around the station. No, nobody, yet. That time will probably come, but I, I don't want the county to take the lead on it. I would like it to come about naturally. So if people want to develop that area, especially the residents, you know? If they want that area redeveloped, they need to come talk to us, and not, and more than one or two. They need to get together and say, "We need a change in this area." So anyway, we've got some time involved in that, and we'll wait till a developer comes, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is the finish of citizens' communication, and now we have a public discussion item, Mr. Krupp.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I want to invite Mike McAllister, the planning director, up to the dais. And this item is to consider approval of the Clackamas County Planning and Zoning Division's Long Range Land Use Planning 2016-2017 Work Program.
Thank you very much, commissioners, for the record. Mike McAllister, I'm the planning director, and to my, to my right is, excuse me, Jennifer Hughes is principal planner. And just to be clear for the record, in honor of St. Patrick's Day, I did have on this morning one of my green camo hunting shirts with my pink pinstripe tie. And my wife took my truck keys away until I changed it, so... But thank you very much. We're here to discuss the Planning and Zoning Division's Work Program for 2016-2017. As you recall, the Work Program is considered every year by the Board of County Commissioners through, through a public, public process. We started this about three years ago, maybe four years ago now, and for the board to formally adopt the Work Program, that enables the Planning and Zoning Division to kind of know exactly what you want us to work on, to allocate resources to those projects accordingly. As part of the developing the Work Program, we do solicit proposals and advertise that we're looking for projects. We complete outreach to CPOs, hamlets, and villages in the county, also to other interested parties that we have on a general mailing list. Send it to, to all of you, to the planning commission members, and we send it to other division, internal divisions within DTD to solicit those process, projects. And then, secondly, after we get all those and assemble those projects, we conduct a public meeting with the planning commission for them to vet that project list also and make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The details of the Work Program and all the projects are in your packet, and as you recall, we presented that information to you in more detail at a March 1 policy session. If you recall, there is a total of 32 projects proposed for the Work Program this year. All of those projects would be funded by general fund dollars. There's no grant proposals or anything in the hopper at this point to fund any of those projects. We look very closely at our staffing resources for the next year and actually about the next 18 months. We estimate that we can commit just under two staff or two FTE to projects for the Work Program. Of course, this does not include the other things that the planning department does, including staffing the public service, front counter, or phone duty, or phone room, and all our, processing all of our land use applications, and actually doing work for, planning work for three cities, we do their contract work. So we estimate about two FTE to do projects in the Work Program. Certainly, if those, if the workloads associated with the Program increase, it would affect the ability to do public service in a timely fashion and/or, you know, have, have longer turnaround times for processing land use applications, which to some degree, you know, we have some statutory deadlines to complete those. The staff report that you have includes the planning commission, or the staff recommendation. You will note that the staff recommendation includes five projects. One of the project is actually a project that is already initiated by the Board of County Commissioners, and we are, or we are beginning to do that work, and it revolves around the relook at three rural reserve areas in the county. Four other projects recommended by staff, including continued work on the ZDO audit. And Jennifer has put together a schedule of the audit and can certainly answer any questions about that if you have those tonight. Generally, the audit's been delayed about a year as a result of, as you recall, we put the marijuana, or the ZDO audit, we put it aside for about six months to do marijuana regulations, and we've actually spent about the last two months spending a lot of time implementing and getting those regulations in place and getting applications where they can be completed and turned into the county. We received over 80 land use applications thus far for marijuana applications in the first two months. The next project is the consideration of the disincorporation of the City of Damascus. As you may recall, that vote is scheduled for May 17. If the city disincorporates, if that ballot measure passes and the city disincorporates, the city would be disincorporated officially on July 18 or 60 days later. The, currently, the 2005 rendition of the zoning and development ordinance applies to that land within the City of Damascus. They adopted that when the city incorporated, it has not been updated. As you know, we've amended our zoning ordinance many, many times since that time. So one of the projects that we are recommending if the city disincorporates is, to an effect, repeal the 2005 zoning ordinance that the City of Damascus adopted and replace it with the county's current 2016 zoning ordinance.
So, may I ask a question? I actually got a call from a newspaper about that today, and I wasn't sure. Because it only makes sense that if the city no longer exists, wouldn't the current county zoning apply? And I couldn't, they prob, they may have called you after they called me, or they called you. Because I wasn't sure. I mean, logically, you would think that if the city had adopted a standard that was different than ours, when the city goes away, it becomes our standard. So, but there is a process, you're telling me, to... And is that a big process, or is it a one-meeting, two-meeting kind of thing?
First of all, I think you are right. I am confident that the board has to take some land use action to, in effect, adopt the current land use regulations, our zoning ordinance, and apply them to the geographic area in the city. And that is a process that involves a public hearing by the planning commission and a second public hearing by the Board of County Commissioners for adoption. We are, have already had discussions about how we do that in the most timely fashion so that there is not a gap between when the city disincorporates and when the county applies our regulations. We'll continue to talk to council about ways to do that and to expedite that. There are some challenges that, and sort of legal issues that we're considering, because until the city actually disincorporates, if they do on July 18, this board doesn't have jurisdiction. So how much of that stuff can we do before the city officially disincorporates? And we'll be working on that and be prepared to have a plan in place once the vote, we know what the vote, outcome of the vote is.
So, a follow-up. It seems to me that we should almost be ready... I don't know what the implications might be, but it could be significant. One of the other issues is that they voted to put it on the ballot to opt out in November.
Marijuana, yeah.
At marijuana, and so you could literally have a...
I want to just inform you that I did talk to Nate Boderman today. And there's some real complications about that, like Mike said. Can we convene in advance? But it is going to be a legal thing, so I'd suggest we don't... But it is going to be a legal thing, so I'd suggest we don't, we don't press on that because it will be a legal rendering, and then they will guide us forward. Like, I, I agree that we should get a critical path up before the, before the vote. Because we can say, "Well, wait till the vote," and then, no, we ought to have a path because it's either going to go Path A or Path B, right? So I agree with you, we should do it in advance. But again, he's exploring that, it's really much more of a legal thing. If we, if we start saying it's going to be the following right now, we're going to probably be wrong until that legal rendering.
I just have some fear of perhaps a land rush if, on marijuana growers, could be a potential.
Now that you just informed him about that, yeah.
Well, they never watch this, if they do, they fall asleep.
Yeah.
I appreciate those, and we are working on a strategy and trying to resolve those issues. And I think from my perspective, the sooner you can make those regulations in fact and eliminate or narrow that gap, that's sort of, I think, a good direction.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, so the other, I got the phone call as well from the Dana Timms with the Oregonian. So the other question that came up that he asked was the marijuana regulations. That's already embedded in our ZDO, in our ordinances, right? So that would be automatically adopted?
No, it will not, that's what we're talking about. It will not, I talked to, I talked to, everybody talks to Dana Tim, and I talked to Mike, and I talked to Boderman. Again, anything adopt, whether it's comprehensive plan or any portion of our ordinances, has to be a process to get it there. And so, nothing is automatic except for the reversion back to the 2005 comprehensive plan, period.
Well, I guess what I meant was, my question was, if we take the action and we adopt our current plan and overlay it onto that, the marijuana is, is part of that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, that was, that was my question. So the follow-up, the follow-up question to that is, I just lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. We can go to Jim real quick. You want to say something more? Oh, I just thought you were going to say something.
The, the other part of the, in part, as part of that project, looking at, you know, if Damascus disincorporates and applying the county's ZDO to that area, the other part of that that we've sort of allocated some potential time to is coordinating and looking at our urban growth management agreement. Because the city goes away, I think we'll be having some discussions with the City of Happy Valley about their interest in expanding the urban growth management area, and how much, and when, and whether that's appropriate or not. So we'll be considering some time to allocate that discussion with the city.
So I remember my question now. So the follow-up was, we have our residential zoning, we have our commercial zoning, we have all the zoned areas in the county in the urban growth boundary. Do they, did they get that far? Because I'm not familiar with their plan.
The current zoning in the City of Damascus is the same zoning that existed in 2004. It's all rural zoning. It's RA1, RA2, RFF5, rural commercial, EFU, TBR.
Okay.
It's all rural zoning.
That's what I was afraid of, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, we got to remember, one of the big controversies there was how many, and they made it so the citizens had to pass the comprehensive plan. And what, failed four, five, six times, I don't know, but that was, that was the big problem. That's why they're stuck back in 2004, or I should say 2005, by the time it was enacted, or they adopted it, I should say. All right. You were, you were, you were number three.
The fourth project, or, excuse me, the third project recommended by staff is, we've allocated some time to consider any amendments or updates to the marijuana ordinance that the Board have passed in December. We tracked, you know, we're, we're processing applications, we're kind of keeping, begin keeping a list of things that we think were working or not working, or at least need some clarification in ordinance. There were two, there was a Senate bill and a House bill passed by the Legislature in 2016 that amended some of the land use regulations. We don't think that's going to cause us to make any significant changes. But we committed to the Board when that was adopted in December that we would monitor that really closely. We'll check back and see if we need to make any amendments to that ordinance towards the end of this year. And the last project, we'd be looking at updating our natural resource zoning district, which is our exclusive farm use, ag forest district, and TBR districts. And try and keep that on the work program every year so that we are, our ordinances are consistent with the state law requirements. We don't have conflicts, we aren't less restrictive than the state law until we continue to monitor legislation and any changes to those natural resource districts that we do in those three zoning districts. With that, those five projects, the four that staff has recommended and the rural, rural reserve relook is what staff has recommended. That in itself is a fairly ambitious work program with allocated resources that we have. I will note that there, if there are things that, you know, if we do Damascus and it's pretty simple and there's not a lot of controversy, or we don't have to spend a lot of time updating marijuana regulations, that we would recommend we commit those additional resources to the zoning development ordinance audit and continue to work on that project. The Plan Commission considered this work program at a, at a hearing on February twenty-second. You have minutes from that Plan Commission meeting and reference to that in the staff report. The Plan Commission recommended that the Park Avenue Design Plan Project, which is project number nine, be the number-one priority. You have some information from the Planning Commission about that. They're encouraged you to find resources to do that project. So with that, we appreciate, we had a very high level of interest in projects proposed this year. We really appreciate that we got all those projects for consideration. Staff continues to believe that the five projects that we recommended are the best use of the resources that we have at this time. For the most part, those projects, the, the ZDO audit, the marijuana regulations, the update of the natural resource districts, they, they affect the entire county, they affect large parts of the county. And that the Damascus one is important because it's critical from a timing standpoint. So that's why we continue to recommend those projects. Happy to answer any questions you have, and if you have any questions on the audit, or my voice goes away, Jennifer can help.
I think it's worthy of noting, the, the, it's in, in our packet, and you've actually talked to us about this before, but one of the reasons that we don't have more planners is not because we're not willing to hire them. What happens is, of course, the people that are working on these first five and many more have to be apparently experienced in order to do that. And you have a ton of retirements coming up, is that correct?
That's correct. We have one retired in January, one retiring in May, another one retired in June, and two more next year, probably.
And those are not entry-level planners?
They are not.
They will be replaced by same, but they're not, those entry-level, level planners are probably not capable of at least the first five here without some experience.
There are challenges with getting, having the right people to do some of those projects. They're demanding, they require some historical knowledge and experience doing that.
Commissioners, any further questions before we open it up to the public? All right, I'm going to announce, this is a discussion item, and we have some cards here. So, start with Joseph Edge and Mark Meek.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Edge, I represent the Oak Grove Community Council on MAPIT, where I also chair the Design Subcommittee, which drafted a robust proposal using an iterative feedback process that included recurring presentations, discussions, and exercises with MAPIT, the Oak Grove and Jennings Lodge CPOs, and professional planners. The MAPIT proposal is rooted in the goal of eliminating onerous regulations that are hindering private investment in a blighted area without forcing new regulations on existing businesses. These landowners' property rights are already impinged upon by existing regulations, preventing them from benefiting from what is an appropriate use of their land based on the comprehensive plan. The previous TGM plan consisted only of apartments and surface parking, was unimaginative, and required major public investment in infrastructure, presumably via urban renewal, and was not consistent with McLaughlin area plan's concept of intense mixed-use activity centers focused at major nodes along McLaughlin. Additionally, McLaughlin is an employment opportunity area, and new mixed-use development should be encouraged to include employment uses, offices, hotels, neighborhood-serving commercial storefronts on the ground floor, in addition to housing. Housing is the hot item right now, and it would likely be tough to get the right mix of uses the community wants without a plan. An increasing share of our population wants to live in walkable areas in close proximity to transit, jobs, restaurants, neighborhood services, and recreation. That doesn't mean we stop building houses and build only apartments. It does mean we build more apartments than we have been recently. We want to add options to the mix for which there is a clear market demand, and Park Avenue can have all of this with the right plan. We should want to capture that economic potential and tax revenue potential, which even in small towns like Asheville, North Carolina, can reach up to $600,000 an acre per year. Compare that to the tax revenue that's generated from the Oak Grove Fred Meyer site of half of that across eleven acres, or $27,500 an acre. And this shouldn't be about copying or not copying what Portland is doing. It should be about learning what, from what other counties are doing across the nation. Other counties implementing or exploring rezoning for walkable urban development are in Virginia, North Carolina, Georgia, Florida, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, Minnesota, New Mexico, and more. These market trends transcend Portland, and failure to embrace this reality risks our future viability as a vibrant community. Some outcomes from this process could have modest impacts on the whole Boulevard. However, the approach recommended by professional planners and developers was to start with a very small area. Everyone on MAPIT expressed support for using Park Avenue as a template for future nodes on McLaughlin, with Jennings Avenue up next. This proposal is consistent with performance Clackamas because good government builds public trust by listening to and acting on the requests of its citizens when we return year after year to advocate for important projects, grows a vibrant economy by enabling economic development in blighted areas, builds a strong infrastructure by enabling more productive uses of land that will increase tax revenues, ensures safe, healthy, and secure communities by encouraging a vibrant, walkable district with eighteen hours, seven days a week of activity, increased property values, which will bring a different mix of tenants, and honors, utilizes, promotes, and invests in natural resources by encouraging more efficient use of land that allows for enhanced landscaping standards, natural area restoration, and public open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, Mr. McAllister, around that Park Avenue station, you and I have talked about that. There is greatly flexible zoning in place there currently, is that correct?
The current, the current zoning around Park Avenue, along McLaughlin Boulevard corridor is C3. It's a general commercial zone. It's our probably most, most sort of liberal, if you will, commercial zoning district. On the edges of it is some multifamily, it's generally MR1, twelve units per acre. The commercial, the C3 zoning district, it does exist. It does allow just about any type of service, retail, or commercial use. It does allow mixed uses, there's a housing density that's allowed that's twenty-five units per acre. So it allows a broad range of, of any commercial retail use and allows mixed-use housing. There's no height limitations, those sort of things. So it's, it's probably our least restrictive, if you will, commercial zone.
In that particular one, could there be, you know, commercial on the bottom, residential up above?
Yes.
So you see, a lot of this already exists in our zoning, so, you know, I think, you know, as a real estate broker, I'll say that I think we're waiting to a large extent for players, for people that want to redevelop, and whether that's an aggregate of landowners or a developer who has contacted said landowners to say, "We have an idea about down there." Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Joseph, for your well-thought-out testimony. And it's obvious to me that a lot of citizens in this area have done a lot of work on this, and I commend you for that. But a lot of the, the examples you were quoting, I believe, today, many of them were examples of incorporated cities. And I know there's a resistance for this area to incorporate, but it's a really hard situation for the county to give, to provide all the city's services in a way that, that you're demanding in this area, but yet you're not a city. And frankly, the, the county really can't afford to do that, I, I don't think, on its own. So as more comments come forward, you might want to keep that in mind, that this is an unincorporated area of Clackamas County.
Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I attended a MAPIT meeting here just a few weeks ago, and the discussion came up, and which I follow up with Mike as well, as far as the, yeah, it is twelve units per acre in the MR1, right, correct?
Yes.
Currently, but the commercial side, as you mentioned, was twenty-five units per acre. And earlier, when I asked Chuck Robbins about how much density was, how many units per acre were at the town center, or actually, the acreage, so we're building sixty units there, up to seventy-eight, up to, on five, four acres, let's say, that comes out to be about fifteen, fourteen units per acre, seventeen units per acre. So well within the twenty-five, as that's done in a commercial, so. But currently, it's at fifteen units per acre, and that's a nice development to go look at. That's where we, a lot of our, that's almost, I think we'll be cutting a ribbon on that this, this year.
Yeah, we do.
It's pretty well underway. It's going, it's pretty far along. But the issue that I've got with that, more than anything, is two things, that I've heard from the neighbors. One is the parking issue that we already have right now because of the, the undersized parking structure. And so how that is accommodated, how that pencils out for parking is one challenge. And of course, the other one I'm concerned about for a lot of the folks there, knowing the cost of housing, is if that area gentrifies to the point to where the people who live there today are actually displaced. And displaced, the question is, where do they go if they're literally outpriced? So I think we've got to be very thoughtful about how we approach this. And your staff recommendation of working through that on page two of the board packet, I, I concur with. But we need to think, we need to be really, really careful. There's no harm in taking a look at and studying all that, but I think establishing specific guiding principles for this project moving forward, as well as incorporating that with the, what we adopted on, or not adopted, but approved on Tuesday, to make sure that those community values are met. So, so I appreciate, we're looking forward to our meeting in a couple of weeks to talk about that further.
Commissioner Bernard.
So, for clarification's sake, this zoning is not just specifically Park Avenue's McLaughlin corridor, correct? Yeah, so all, it's not just around Park Avenue, it's pretty much down the corridor. Which at some point, somebody, this is actually what I've been arguing for, for a long time. You know, if we look at opportunities for employment and for housing, why are we not looking at McLaughlin Boulevard where the str, the streets are, the sewers are, and the water is? It's, it, but it still requires somebody of interest. That's right, you know, somebody needs to assemble those lots. And I was surprised how much a car lot got. It, you know, a lot of rent. And when you live in California and the rent comes in, you know, five thousand a month, you probably don't much care. But someday, somebody has to kind of get those pieces together and do something. Because, you know, the biggest tax generator in the county is Cruz, Cruzway. I mean, it's massive. I mean, wouldn't that be nice?
Cruzway and McLaughlin, Commissioner Savis.
Just wanted to do a follow-up, you know, just ask Jim, because I know he's got some property there in Milwaukee. Any activity there with interest of building anything similar to this in the city of Milwaukee?
Around the station, you mean?
They have much stricter zoning on downtown Main Streets than on McLaughlin Boulevard, by far. The height is limited, the parking is limited. So there is some interest in downtown Milwaukee, but I can't specifically identify a project that, that there are people looking at, but...
Obviously, with all the services that are there, that it'd be the prime place for something that, like that to happen.
Yeah, well, for services, there's restaurants and there's, you couldn't buy a pair of shoes or a pair of socks on Main Street. Not like you used to.
Let's hear from Mr. Meek.
Thank you, Commissioners, Chair. I'm actually here as a representative of the County Planning Commission to mention the letter that we attached, that Mr. McAllister attached to your package. And it was basically, I'm here as representative to let you know that all the commissioner, all the planning commissioners are in favor of the adjustment of prioritizing some research and some work and development on this Park Avenue station. We think that if you, if you look at, early on in my, my career, I always tried to utilize the resources in front of me and try to maximize the, basically, resources I had. And I see right now that even though it's not incorporated, it is part of our, part of our county, and it's a great economic tool. The termination of the light rail at that, at that, at Park Avenue is, is a prime spot to develop. And I know we can get partners. So I think part of the plan to, if you build it, they will come, if we organize it, we get it consensus, and work with the, the community and the partners there in that, in that community to rezone. And we do need to rezone to make it more specific and exact to what a developer can do. Because nobody wants to come out and, and play crapshoot that they're going to have the opportunity to build it, they want, to build it and develop it the way they want it. So I think if we develop properly, we, we define it a little differently as an overlay, that it will be a better opportunity for developers to come in. And I, I know I'm getting a look, but I, I've, I totally agree, and I believe with all the work that these guys have done at MAPIT. They've spent years trying to... They've spent years trying to develop and come up with a plan, and it's being ignored, we feel. So I just want to recommend that we, if there are any resources available and partners, that we should try at the, at the best we could to make that happen.
Mark, you're a real estate broker.
Yes.
So am I. You certainly represented a lot of clients. So if a client owned a piece of property, and they knew it could go a bunch of different ways zoning-wise, would you recommend that the owner of that property go ahead and decide for the potential buyer the way it was going to be? Or would you think it's be, it would be better for the buyer to come in and say, "Since it's so flexible, I'd like to do what I want to do"? Which one is it?
Well, let me give you an example, okay? We got land out in Damascus that's RFF5. Maybe it's, you know, 20 acres on, 20-acre property that's RFF5. All of a sudden, you come in and make it R10. That makes it much more valuable, but the planning department, or the, or the county, or whoever the municipality is, changes that zoning, that makes it much more valuable. And I do work with clients like that, where there was changes in the zoning, and all of a sudden, their property's much more valuable, and they can sell it to a developer or, you know, a builder. And so I'm not saying that we want to, that my builder, my owners, the owners of those properties are not, you know, asking to go out and develop it. I think it's part of our, our county to have the foresight to develop that and make it a possibility, and make it a much more sensible way to, to be developed.
Well, having dealt in RFF5 and 10, I have never seen an RF, a 10-acre parcel sell for twice the amount a 5-acre parcel would. So you're saying it'd be more valuable as 10 acres? Multiply a 5-acre parcel, what it sells for, times two, you will never get what a 10-acre parcel sells for.
You're not, I'm not get, you're not getting my point. I'm saying, so my, my client, maybe they only have two acres, but all the land around them gets changed, gets rezoned. And then all of a sudden, all of the other neighbors get together, they sell to one guy, they, they sell 30 or 40 acres, they will, they will be able to develop and get more money for that.
Well, not much development you can do on RFF5, but Commissioner Smith.
Well, earlier in your test, wanting to go back what you said, I might be confused, but I think you said that the county should go ahead and rezone this, so developers can come in and develop it. You know, that puts us in a very unintenable economic position. Number one, there is no income to pay for our zoning to do this. Usually, when we rezone something, to the extent that it would require for development, it's because we have somebody paying the fee. And so I find that problematic, but I will go back and, and notice what you said in your letter, is that subject to finding available funds to do it? And I appreciate that caveat in there, because if not, that might have been not so accepted.
Sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, I, I'm not looking forward to this Damascus changeover, because, you know, as I recall, and again, from afar, I was not involved, I don't own any property in Damascus, I only own the property that I live on. But from what I remember is that there was going to be a lot of winners and a lot of losers. And that'd be a very tough to figure out which property is designated, what particular zoning, and if someone's sitting on a particular zoning today, and then they, that zoning has changed and they own it, they could be millionaires by just the change of that zoning, let's face it. But I think, to me, again, and I don't have the answer, I'm not proclaiming to have any kind of answer, but I am certainly concerned about what I'm witnessing right now in Portland, where the rents are going through the roof as it gentrifies, and I don't want to see those people displaced out on the street. And I think that's a very serious concern. I, I don't know what the answer is. And, and granted, they're blighted, but how we, how we improve that area and fix those blighted neighborhoods is going to be a very delicate balancing act. But I, I don't want to see someone get rich at the expense of someone being on the street.
No, I, I agree with that, too. But part of the process is to develop and make more housing units available.
Yep, understood.
And then you'll have more people being able to afford rent. Lack of supply right now.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nancy Gibson and Karen Bjorklund.
What do those buttons say?
My button says, "I heart Jennings Lodge trees."
Oh, okay, and they're green.
They're green. Patrick, stay in case you wore red and black.
Okay, thank you.
Or black and white.
Is it okay if I go first? You read my name second, but...
Either way.
My name is Karen Bjorklund, and I'm the Chair of the Jennings Lodge Community Planning Organization, and I thank Jim Knapp, who was thanking Jennings Lodge for the things we've been doing recently. As you saw in the planning packet, the Jennings Lodge CPO submitted a document to planning that's essentially an issues list in priority order, aimed at giving planning staff the tools that they don't have, but they need to have, in the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. There's an overall theme, and interestingly, one of the reasons for that theme reared its ugly head this morning, at the second public hearing on the proposed development of the evangelical property in Jennings Lodge, the, something you probably should know about, the applicant cited about four state statutes that they were using to challenge, to call into question the county's comp plan and the zoning ordinance for the entire county. And those are legal issues, and I don't know how they're going to play out, but I do know that those issues would not and could not have been raised if, number one, all the goals and policies that were in the comp plan about development were actually implemented in the zoning ordinance, and number two, all the provisions in the zoning ordinance were unarguably clear and objective standards. So those two things dealt with what the, what the attorneys were bringing up today. The list of issues and problems that our community gave us to bring to you, which translated into the proposals to planning staff, are actually in support of those two goals, so that there are clear and objective standards that protect the existing resources and residents of unincorporated Clackamas County in planning for development through the land use process. For the last few years, Jennings Lodge has been proposing some subjects for this effort, and planning staff has responded, generally speaking, with descriptions of staffing issues and other reasons why not, not much can actually be started. The problem is that if nothing gets started, nothing gets solved. So I, we ask you, and I'm flat-out begging you, to pick a zoning ordinance topic to get a discussion started on something that will lead to giving the citizens and planning staff the tools that we all need to develop our future together. And our, on our list are a series of different possible topics that you could, and different possibilities that you could use for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard.
Yeah, you know, I agree. We had a plan. The voters voted in marijuana, and Damascus is going away. That really stalled out our plans. And I think we should get back to them as soon as possible, but I'll make a comment a little later when we look at those, the plans, and, and why I think there should be one particular change. So, and if we made that change, we could move forward faster on fixing that issue, but...
I, I like that.
I'll bring it up.
Commissioner Savas.
So Karen, just to test the waters here, I see some of the submittals for, you know, some work, and, you know, I know which one appeals to me, which I think is a good starting point, which is number 14. But what is your particular one that you favor of those numbered?
When you say number 14, are you talking about what, the staff list numbers?
Uh, 14, number 14 of the...
Because we have ours numbered differently.
Yeah, it's the one that reads, "Protecting Existing Neighborhoods, Neighborhood Character." That's the one I'm referring to.
The, the list that we presented, and I think it's in the, the same order in the staff report as we presented, was the priority order that we got from the community. So they, that, that was there, and that was based on how many people made those suggestions. So we took that as the way to develop the priority order. But certainly, what you're suggesting does get to the core theme of all of those.
Yeah, I think it's, it's the fundamental or the foundational piece that sets the stage for everything else.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You're next.
Oh, good evening, everybody. Nancy Gibson from Jennings Lodge, and I'm here just as Nancy from Jennings Lodge today. One, I am here to support the proposals that have been put forth by the Jennings Lodge CPO for consideration for the ZDOs. This is a very important topic. As Karen mentioned, we are increasingly finding, when we are going into land use issues, that it's difficult for developers, and it's difficult for citizens to understand exactly what the rules are. There seem to be some conflicting statements within our ZDOs, so I support that you take a look at the ZDOs and have a further look at them, so that we can have more clarity around this. And I also would like to support the area around Park Avenue. We have a wonderful opportunity in the McLaughlin area to revitalize the McLaughlin corridor. I think we all have a number of visions around that. I think now that with the terminus of the max light, max rail at Park Avenue, which will make transportation considerably easier, it will make the connection between Park Avenue and, and Oregon City with bus lines a reality, we can revitalize that area back into an economic engine. And I believe that the McLaughlin area plan that has been discussed at length provides some great guidelines and proposals for that, and I ask you to consider it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is...
Good comments. Thank you very much.
Ed Gronke and Baldwin Vanderbilt.
Good evening, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. I'm Baldwin Vanderbilt. I'm the Chair of the Oak Grove Community Council, and I've lived in Oak Grove for 37 years. I wish to support, including the Park Avenue Station planning, in the Planning Department's 2016-17 work plan. This could have been worked on this year, but the whole marijuana issue put a gabosh on that and many other projects, as has been pointed out already. Also, on February 22 of this year, the Planning Commission met to review next year's work plan, and as Mark Meek said, the Commission voted to make the Park Avenue Station planning the highest priority. Switching subjects a little bit, economic development was discussed last year at the July 14 joint BCC Metro Meeting. Three areas presented were North Milwaukee Industrial Area, the Rock Creek Sunrise Corridor, and saving the best for the last, is the McLaughlin Boulevard Corridor. I'd like to give one example of a change that might help the Boulevard, and it's been discussed already, but I just wanted to add a little bit to it. In C3 commercial zoning, there is a lot of flexibility for construction of buildings. For example, a building can have commercial on the first floor and then apartments above it. However, you're not allowed to build more than 25 apartments per acre. We've had two developers out who have said that that will not pencil out. It needs to be more. We didn't get into how much more, but it doesn't pencil out. So developers would be interested if the number of apartments per acre were more, a more reasonable number. Much work has been done on Park Avenue Station planning. Numerous meetings have been held, discussing just the Park Avenue Station. MAP-IT and MAP, that's been discussed on a lot of other meetings also. But it's been discussed with the Oak Grove Community Council, MAP-IT, and also the Jennings Lodge CPO. Now is the time to help this effort by including it in the Planning Department's 2016-17 work plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Baldwin. Mr. Gronke.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Ed Gronke. I live at 4912 Southeast Ryanairson Road in Jennings Lodge. And to answer the obvious question I know is in all of your minds, yes, I am wearing green tonight, but I only let my most intimate friends see that article of clothing.
Green shorts? You want to admit to green shorts?
And now to the real reason I'm here. It has to do, of course, with both the Park Avenue Station plan and our request, I'm here as the Chair of McLaughlin Area Plan Implementation Team, our request to look into a modification of the C3 zoning along McLaughlin, and Baldwin has already put it very well. We have a well-respected Realtor, and a, yeah, she's a Realtor, as a member of our committee. She's a member of the McLaughlin Area Business Alliance, Sandra MacLeod, and she's very, been very outspoken about the need for greater density in the C3 area, if we ever hope to attract the kind of developers who are going to come to build the kind of housing that the MABA group feels is needed, in order, in order to support the businesses they have and the businesses they would like to attract. And I'm, was happy to hear Jim Knapp speaking tonight, because he, obviously, Jim and I are interested in the same thing. It was very interesting to hear him worry so much about unscrupulous developers already appearing in the Park Avenue area, and I'm sure that's the case. And the reason that we are asking for some sort of zoning overlay for Park Avenue is to avoid having that kind of thing happen. Otherwise, we could very well get all the, the housing, the type of housing that Jim does not want to see there. I know that. I don't think we're really that much at odds here. We are all looking for the same thing. I think the changes we are asking for on McLaughlin, and we'd already agreed with the Planning Department, that it wouldn't necessarily have to go all the way down the Boulevard. We were talking about using a smaller area, maybe not even as far as Courtney, from Park Avenue to Courtney, as a test area to see what would develop. We are not talking about going out into the MR1 areas, but simply restricting it to McLaughlin and see if some of these developers will begin to show up. I keep hearing stories that they are there. And so I'm just here to ask you to seriously consider this. I think we're all on the same page.
Commissioner Savas.
Well, thank you, Ed, for speaking, and I appreciate working together with you on MAP 1, MAP 2, and certainly appreciate your leadership on MAP-IT and everything else you've done, along with a lot of people in the room here today. And I, you know, I know that some of the prop, I know some of the property owners in that area you just described, and they're, they're nervous. They're nervous as heck about that. So I don't know. I think staff's recommendation on page two is to maybe get better definition and work with you folks around what that looks like, and maybe we could gather some of the property owners around there and have a discussion to alleviate that. But until I think we see, and I think it's been our policy for about a year or two now, you know, some kind of coalescing with the property owners around something like that, and, and the resources as well, we have a number of challenges here with staff resources, let alone the financial piece of that. But I think that's a part that, that I think worries us, and of course, the gentrification thing I spoke to earlier, how do we do this in a way that we, we don't price people out of the area?
Well, I think, I think one of the decisions you have to make is, is it the role of the county to use zoon, zoning to protect people currently in their houses and not have them be priced out of the market when the inevitable increase in values take place? If you all agree that that is something that the county should really advocate, I think you have to be willing to say it. I'm not sure that we would agree with that position. There is a demand for housing in this area. The demand, as we all know, is becoming more and more serious. All you have to do is look at the stats and see the increase in housing prices every year throughout the area, and it's happening out here, too. It's happening all around the, and as well as in Portland, but it's happening out here. These houses are going to, properties are going to continue to increase in value, and all we can hope to do is to have it happen in a way which works out for the best for everyone involved.
Right.
You know, I'll go ahead.
I just want to just follow up on that. I appreciate that, Ed. This is in extraordinary circumstances. I mean, this is something that all the county commissioners of all the, all the regional counties around here, and I even spoke with one of the multiple county commissioners this morning about this very issue, how do we, how do we tackle this? So I think ordinarily, probably not, but in this extraordinary times, trying to find, keep housing affordable, it's not the quantity, it's the affordability that comes first. And that's where my, that's where my, that pulls on my heartstrings, is that when people are actually forced out in the street, a working family is forced out in the street because of this radical escalation of price, and Chuck Robbins earlier citing this 30% increase in the rent, double-edged sword, that we got more money. citing this 30% increase in the rent, double edged sword that we got more money. But some of those people are going to see rent increases because they need to pay their share for that affordable housing. And I don't know where that money's going to come from. So it's a crisis. So that's why we need to be very careful in how we proceed forward. I think caution and calculate in a way. But I don't think Portland's got the answer because those people are out on the street.
No, they certainly don't. I commend your sensitivity.
You know, whenever I think of, and you know, you talk about 25 units per acre is not enough, is 40. And then where's the parking then? Is this going to be like Portlandesque here? No, Ed, let me finish.
Okay.
You know, again, high density means high amount of cars. I don't care. You can assume that these, oh, they're not going to use cars. They're going to use mass transit. Don't bet on that. And you look along the McLaughlin Corridor, and you say, all right, how much land would it take if I wanted to build 40 units per acre? So I got two acres full of 80 units. How much parking would that take? How many more lots along McLaughlin would be needed for parking? So I'm not a big advocate of high-density housing. 25 seems huge to me. And we just got through talking about, you know, preserving the character of neighborhoods. Just because it's only one lot deep off McLaughlin doesn't mean it doesn't affect the rest of the neighborhoods. So when you get into 40 units per acre, and let's say you had five acres you put together, that's all of a sudden 200 units. It's going to affect people all the way back to River Road, in my opinion. So anyway, I appreciate you both talking today. Thank you for your time. And one last card, Terry Gibson.
Mr. Chair, we have discussed the parking issue with the Planning Department. I agree with your position on that, by the way.
Thank you, Ed. You're batting cleanup here, Terry.
Yes, I know. For all the joviality, it's a tough crowd. Hi, I'm Terry Gibson. I'm here this evening as Jennings Lodge representative to MAPit. I'm a 26-year resident of Jennings Lodge. I'm going to speak in favor of support of the O-line or orange line overlay, as Joseph and my other colleagues and representatives of the community have discussed this evening. I think it's time that the county actually puts out a welcome mat in this area instead of leaving it up to people wondering and having uncertainty in what they're going to encounter when they show up at the county with some plans in mind. I think you really need to give Joseph and Nate Burton credit for the year and more that they've spent working in the community to getting a jumpstart on this process. And as my understanding, that if this august body would simply approach Metro for the money to help us with this planning process, they would gladly work with us. So I will stop there and entertain any questions for you.
Metro announced to us, Terry, some four months ago, that they are planning to plan for McLaughlin. So you just ask them. They're coming down. They want to help you out. All right.
Are you?
Am I what?
Wanting to help us out?
No, I want to help Metro out.
Oh, I see.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'll close the public portion and ask for a motion.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Clackamas County Planning and Zoning Division's long-range plant, land use planning 2016-2017 work program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Bernard.
To stay consistent, I'm voting no on this because of Item 1.
And will you state what that is, Mr. Bernard?
Reanalysis of the urban rural reserves.
Oh, I understand. All right. Any other Commissioner comments? You know, we, as far as the urban rural maps, we have half of the region's urban reserves are contained in Stafford and Damascus. That last word is a little bit of a problem because if they go away, that's going to affect the reserves throughout the region, not just Clackamas County. And where's our replacement for that? Well, Metro says you don't need any. And so we disagree by majority that that should be the case. So that's my comment on that portion of it. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I just want to say that the, as Mr. Meek cited, there's a shortage of inventory. And I think that's one of the reasons we are studying the reserves to better adjust, especially, we'll know far more after May 17th with regard to what Damascus does. And also the fact that we're growing our population faster. We're growing jobs. There's an employment element to this as well. So the crisis that I spoke to earlier about the cost of housing and the amount of jobs out there, I, we don't have any choice other than to find a solution. And so to me, I have a completely different opinion than Commissioner Bernard on this. But I think that is, that is first and foremost, the most important thing that we accomplish and solve, is our inventory of employment lands and our ability to know where we're going to be growing so that the amount of inventory we do have will lessen displacement of people and actually open opportunity for new residents.
Commissioner Schrader.
So I'm really torn on this one because I agree with my commissioners that we need to have to be looking at additional employment land. However, number one is problematic for me because there are a number of situations where there are willing cities to step up to the plate to annex those areas where they would have additional employment land. And there is one piece, particularly the South of the River piece, where you have our city of Wilsonville, who's going to be unwilling to step up to the plate and serve that. And the bottom line is, if that was removed, I could be a yes on this. But I think that as we move ahead looking for the additional employment land we need, that we also have to make sure that we have the willing partners in order to make sure that the services are there, the water, the roads, sewer systems, everything else that we need. And in this one particular case, I just don't see that happening. And it concerns me that that will become extremely controversial and problematic. So I really do support the majority of the plan. And I do support looking at employment lands, but I'm going to vote no because of that one particular issue. So there you go.
Commissioner Savis.
Well, I mean, I'm looking forward to the, to some of the forums as the campaign season starts to unravel or roll out. And that is, I'm looking forward especially to the Wilsonville one when I'm asked a question about that. And I think the, I'll just kind of, kind of state the obvious, at least it should be obvious to the five of us, that, you know, we were subject of a lawsuit, which is now kind of put on hold because the property owner who's south of the river has said, we have not had a fair process or fair opportunity. Now, whether or not they're right or wrong, the fact that their lawsuit has sustained itself through this whole period of time, and currently that's on hold, that if we don't study it, we're really frankly guilty of the very thing, of the basis of their lawsuit. So, you know, I think we have to. But do I think it's going to come in anytime soon? No. Am I going to push for it to be an urban reserve or an urban growth boundary? No. But I think that we're forced to study that. And I think that absent doing that, they still have a claim. And yet, all the focus, or my focus anyhow, trying to look easterly to find all these solutions, whether it's Damascus, Happy Valley, the Carver area, any of those areas for future employment and land, I think it's terribly important that we study this and find a solution.
Commissioner Bernard.
Hey, you know, I don't want to have this conversation all night either. But, you know, I got to say, the court has already answered that question about south of the Willamette and found that factors were properly applied. So I don't think you can say, well, you can say you look forward to the forum, and I do, too. But, you know, I'd much rather look at what's going to happen on McLaughlin and, you know, right now, because we have a real opportunity on McLaughlin. So that's, thank you. I look forward to that.
Commissioner Schrader.
So I just want to say I do agree with Commissioner Savis. I suspect where all the growth is going to be happening in terms, I hope, of employment land is probably East County. Even with the demise of Damascus, we have Happy Valley there that has been very, very assertive in moving, kind of marching out towards the mountains. So I suspect, as well as having Wilsonville as a hub, our 212 corridor is a hub that will start to see that Happy Valley, East County become an economic engine for our area, particularly if there is any expansion of our healthcare sector in that area. And with that, thank you, colleagues.
You know, we've talked about south of the river, that there's no infrastructure there. There's not a willing city. But who cares? That's today. Can these councils, can they decide for the future? No, they can't. So 25 years from now, if a new council was in place, they might say, hey, that's not a bad idea. But let's not forget this. If the south of the river or any of the other two areas that we're trying to get undesignated, if they were undesignated, what does it take to bring those up to an urban standard? Here's what it takes. 75% of the property zoned for, let's say, industrial, if it ever wants to go industrial, has to be used in the region, in the entire region, before they could consider a concept plan in that area. Then comes the infrastructure and the planning for same. So again, if a property right now is undesignated in the Portland Metropolitan Region, I guarantee it's 25 to 30 years from before anything can happen to that property. And yet, there's fear and gnashing of teeth over, oh, you know, this property may be undesignated. So what? The most valuable property is urban and in annexed into a city. Absolutely. Or at least in UGB. That's the valuable property. For an undesignated piece to get into an urban growth boundary would take decades at minimum. Yet, again, you know, a lot of this has to do with the fact that we cross the Willamette River. Don't forget, if you cross the Willamette River going south, what are you going to see? You're going to see a huge airport, a very commercial, or I should say, almost industrial use. We only have about a mile and a half cross that river until we get to Marion County. That's, we're talking about 600 acres out of French Prairie, which is 130,000 acres at minimum big. So, you know, I appreciate the people saying if we transgress, go across the river, that we'll reach Salem pretty soon. We'll reach Eugene. But again, they've been saying that since I grew up in Clackamas County, and that was a darn long time ago. Commissioner Savis.
Just one follow-up, and I just want to just point out that I was told that the real estate in Malala is just, the housing is, the amount of land available for housing is just going away pretty fast. They're using it all up. Because it's so attractive because it's affordable, and people are moving there. But yet, it's miles and miles away from the urban area, so people have to drive in. So why can't we have that in East County? Why can't we have that in maybe the outskirts of Happy Valley, which is going to be Damascus or not be Damascus, or Carver? I mean, that's where the opportunity is. And that's why I want to look east and help solve the inventory crisis we face.
I might say that we go through a budget, and we're about to start that process here pretty soon. You know, we're going to go through a budget. And every year, each of these commissioners disagree with some portion of that budget. But they go ahead and vote for it anyway. Why isn't it the same tonight? One thing throughout all the work that's been proposed by our planning directors. So, go ahead.
I'd be happy if somebody amended the motion to the others and just left that out and then vote separate. Yeah. Be happy to do that.
I'd like you to vote no, Jim, actually.
Okay, that's fine. Didn't bother me a bit. All right. We're ready for the question? Well, it bothers me to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but that's just my opinion. Mary.
Okay, Commissioner Bernard.
No.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Schrader.
No.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes three to two. Now, and thank you all for coming tonight. You know, it's an evening. It was a beautiful day, and you're stuck in here with us. So thank you for coming and spending your time with us this evening. And now it is time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an agency service contract with Northwest Family Services for kindergarten transition support services. Approval of a revenue agreement with Oregon Department of Education for Medicaid reimbursement. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of Amendment Number Two to an intergovernmental agreement, Metro Grant Agreement Number 931973 with Metro for the Clackamas County Regional Center Wayfinding System. Under Finance, a resolution acknowledging expenditures in excess of appropriations for fiscal year 2015-2016 and describing correction actions in accordance with ORS 297466. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes and a request by the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office for modification of a grant agreement and addition of a 2016 operating and financial plan with the U.S. Forest Service Mount Hood National Forest. Under Community Corrections, approval of a local grant agreement, Number JR15032 between Clackamas County Community Corrections and subrecipient, the Children's Center, for the community-based victim services program. And approval of a local grant agreement, Number JR15032 between Clackamas County Community Corrections and subrecipient, Clackamas Women's Services for community-based victim services programs. And under our Development Agency, approval of an access and parking easement agreement between the Clackamas County Development Agency, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, and A4RK Inc. And that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, Commissioners, you want to pull any of those items? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion on these items? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes five zero. And now, the excitement of the evening, the county administrator update.
I'm waiting for the drum roll.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm also disappointed everybody who's here in the room tonight.
Well, they knew what was coming up.
Not everybody. There's still...
Yeah, there's three.
The important ones are still here.
Yeah. Well, I've got some things to share with you this evening. And of course, you know, every time I walk down the hallway to our Public and Governmental Affairs Office, I'm always impressed with many awards that are mounted on the wall for the excellent work our Cable Division has been doing. And of course, they've just added another trophy to the mantle.
Oh.
They recently won a Bronze Telly Award for our Drive to Zero PSA Series. Now, the Telly Awards, they honor outstanding local, regional, and cable television programs. And of course, Drive to Zero is our Department of Transportation and Development's campaign centered on reducing fatal and serious injuries on our roadways by 2022. The PSA Series has amassed, boy, thousands of views on our social media channels. And so I just wanted to say, keep it up, Cable and DTD. What a wonderful job they've been doing on that. I also wanted to share with you that our team that's been working on the solids handling capacity issue, on behalf of the Tri-City Service District and Clackamas County Service District One, recently hosted an all-day workshop to screen various technologies that might be used as part of a solution. Representatives from five primary cities involved, including Oregon City, Gladstone, Westland, Happy Valley, and Milwaukee participated. We evaluated 12 prospective technologies. And it's really good to see that we had so many folks working together on this very, very important problem. And then I've got a couple of grant awards to share with you. First, back again to the Drive to Zero Program. They received a $9,700 grant from State Farm Insurance. This money will be used to support a program that we've been working on with risk management to offer defensive driver training to every county employee and one member of each employee's family. So that's a great opportunity for employees to learn how to be better defensive drivers.
Does that include Commissioners?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because maybe Martha wants to take that.
Oh, quit picking on Martha.
She got hit today.
Oh, no.
I got hit in the sheriff's parking lot.
She got hit in this parking lot. Really?
Somebody backed into my car today.
They backed in mine, pickup truck.
Well, did you get, did you get a license plate number?
It was all, we got out of the car and everything. She just wasn't looking and I...
Pincushion car.
Driving by. My poor car is a mess.
Sorry to hear that.
It's okay.
So the other grant award we received was for our Resource Conservation and Solid Waste Office. They're getting $36,000 from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality to combat food waste and hunger. So the money's going to be used at the Clackamas Service Center to expand refrigeration space for fresh food donations, and also to hire some additional staff, which will help to decrease food waste and increase food recovery. So as you know, the service center provides some 400 food boxes and 4,000 hot meals every month to children, families, and individuals. And so we're looking forward to being able to help support that by funding some of the logistics and providing much-needed administrative support where it will be very... and providing much-needed administrative support where it will be very, very helpful. That's my report.
I didn't realize there was that many meals. That's big stuff.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. Well, now it's time for commissioners' communications. I'll start with Commissioner Savis.
Well, I'd talk a little bit about special districts and service districts. And with the issues going on, we heard tonight a little bit about sewer, but mostly we heard from our folks about the library, library stuff. But, and recently, the Parson Group met last week to talk about changes perhaps to that district. I always wanna remind folks, at least, I take a lot of pride in my role as being on the Oak Lodge Water District and also being on Oak Lodge Sanitary when we were contemplating, you know, merging with Clackamas County for wastewater services way back in 2003, '04, and '05. And I was watching from afar in 1999, and what I, I didn't like what I saw, so I ran in 2003 for the sanitary district and realized the politics that were involved in that. And, um, our community got together and put it on the ballot in 2005 not to, um, not to merge with Clackamas County and go on our own. And I think it was probably one of the best decisions we ever made. But, and I won't go into the technical details as to why, but I'll just tell you at least one, one of the issues that is really coming home to me today, to a lot of us today. And that is that what I saw from afar from Oak Lodge was that the politics in Clackamas County was such that I didn't wanna be associated with some of those, I saw perhaps inequities that may occur in that. And so we went, we went it alone, and I'm really glad we did. And what I see in special districts is typically the people run for those that serve on those, they're really not political, and it's not a political minefield, if you will. And, and therefore, really, they do a lot of smart things, and they do it very, very, very efficiently. And I just wanna just share my appreciation for everyone who's still staying involved with special districts and maintaining that. And the fact that politics is mostly absent, for the most part, at that level. Ideally, it would be absent from this level, but we're faced with a lot of recent events and so forth that I think, and has been stated, that, you know, political, politics and governments and all these issues, having a political forum and statements like that, it's, it's about wastewater. It's about water. It's about parks. It's about libraries, very fundamental services. It doesn't need to be political. And I had no idea what I was getting into when I ran for commission in 2010, but here I am. And it's just far, I just think it's just far too political, and that's a shame. But, um, even on the decision we made today, I'm just really facing or trying to deal and cope with the very problems that are facing our citizens and trying to do the best I can. But I know we all are, but, but the politics is just kinda, sometimes affects our decision-making, and it shouldn't. Or affects other people's influence, or sometimes throwing the wrench in certain projects or works that undermine our ability to serve the citizens as efficiently as possible and at the lowest cost. And hopefully, there's good news coming out today, as the administrator pointed out, that those, studying those, all those alternatives, have come up with a good decision. And hopefully, common sense will prevail, and we'll all be better off. But hopefully, we can dispel with the politics and look at the common sense elements and do the best we can. So that's what I have for today.
Commissioner Bernard.
Well, because we are elected, we are politicians, whether we like it or not. That is actually the definition of a politician. Actually, I don't think what we do up here is that political at all. Most of the time, we vote for what we believe the citizens of the county want and desire. It's not who contributes to our campaign. It's about doing what's best for the county, which we are elected to serve. So I'm not really sure where that came from. But, um, so I had an opportunity this weekend, and Dawn, I thought you would be there. Maybe it wasn't this, maybe it was Friday. It was a Rotary-sponsored Symposium on Conflict Resolution. I was able to attend part of that. I thought it was very good. The sheriff gave a presentation, you know, he's working with schools around the state to make sure that the students are safe and that lock-in and lock-out mean the same thing to all schools. There has been some confusion on the terminology. He's working to resolve that. Then I attended the AOC Conference. We had our Public Safety Committee meeting, which I'm the co-chair on. Then we toured the Marion County Sheriff's Office Work Center and participated in a roundtable discussion about public safety funding. I'm also a board member on N-RAC, which is our partnership with OSU on a large piece of land, which they do basically experimental farming. I was a little bit surprised about how professors get paid. You know, it's kinda weird. You get hired, but you're, you're hired for a year, but you have to raise three months of that in order to actually get paid for a year. So professors have to raise money for their own salary, which is, I thought was pretty odd. I'd never heard of such a thing. I guess it's just like if we became commissioners and we had to raise our, raise our own pay. It'd be, it's pretty odd. You know, I actually, and then I, last week, I, I believe it was last week, I attended a discussion at the CIA meeting, which was about district consolidation, waste and water treatment. And it was a great discussion. Heard some concerns, heard about opportunities to save money, and some opinions that that wasn't necessarily true, but I think it was a great discussion. I, Jim was there. Appreciate hearing from you and seeing you. It's been a while. But that was a good meeting. Other than that, I have a, my first opportunity to meet my grandchild, which will be on Sunday, get a babysit, but I'm not changing diapers, in case you're watching at home. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
No. No dog?
Oh, okay. Commissioner Schrader.
Well, let's pull up the Arts and Culture Activities in the county to start with. Thanks, Mary. Pardon me? I'll just read it. Oh, okay. It's coming. Why didn't I start reading it here? Oh, and it's green, too. So if you really wanna celebrate St. Patrick's Day, Cambie, Cambie Library Music in the Stacks, Beltane, Celtic Fusion, featuring hammered dulcimer, guitar accordion, mambula, flute, bass, and drums, Saturday, March 19th, 2:30 p.m. at the Cambie Library. Poet Discussion on James Wright. Andrea Hollander will lead, will, will lead the examination of Wright's work and track his poetic journey through a discussion of exemplary poems from his oeuvre. Registration is requested, Saturday, March 19th, 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. at the Letting Library Pond House. And for more information about these and any other arts events, visit at clackamasartsalliance.org. So I did have a busy week, much like my colleagues. I was down at the Association of Oregon Counties, huh, I'm tired tonight, where the Community and Economic Development Steering Committee met, and I am co-chair of that. And we essentially reviewed any of the economic development legislation that had passed this, this go-around and the short legislative session. Last night, I had a Milwaukee Small Business Town Hall with Councilor Scott Churchill and Councilor Wilder Parks. It was very well-intended. We were able to speak directly to the small businesses and get a sense of what their needs are. So I will be approaching our economic development team and our tourism folks to do a follow-up on some of the needs that were expressed in the downtown city of Milwaukee, not the least of which have been directional kiosks. Tomorrow, I'll be heading to Salem for our second meeting of the AOC Association of Oregon Counties Housing Subcommittee. And Friday and Saturday, I'll be attending the Oregon Women's Veterans Conference. Gert Boyle is going to be giving a keynote speech at that conference on Saturday. And most especially, a week from today, we are going to have our Oregon-China Economic Forum. And this is actually a coalition of folks, and that is Clackamas, Clackamas County Association of Oregon Cities, our sister cities in China, and our Business and Economic Development Group. That's going to happen on March 24th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. with a, with a, you know, gathering afterwards with some wine and some cheese. So we're asking our business community to attend in any business that is interested in taking a look at how they can move into exporting, actually, in particular, to the growing markets that are happening in China. So thank you, colleagues. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Well, there was an open house out in Malala at a new company called Pacific Fiber Products. Chair Ludlow and I both went. And the nice thing about it is they make wood products from leftover unused wood in the sawmills. They make all types of barks. There's about 10 different products. And this facility is located in Malala. There's another one in Hillsborough and across in Clark County, I believe. I had a Willamette Falls tour yesterday with a group of people that came out who had never seen it before. We gave them a good opportunity. They were just totally amazed, just couldn't believe it. Of course, we've had a lot of rain, so the water was really heavy, a lot of volume, and it was, it was quite a lot of fun. And after that, there was a Lamont Falls Locks Task Force. It's a state task force that was set up to try to reopen and transfer ownership. And we were able to focus on the economic benefits and what those could be to allow the Corps of Engineers to count that as opening it back up to commerce. And I think we did some good work. That will be compiled, and we will move forward on that. The Housing Advisory Board met this afternoon, and we discussed, um, well, what the plan for Clackamas County's housing is as far as the HUD-owned housing. But we also discussed alternatives, tiny houses, affordable housing options in this county, and what we can do outside of the regular conventional, traditional federal housing monies that come to us. And they're becoming less and less and less and more burdensome as we go forward. So that was a very good committee meeting today. Also, we, I attended the C-4 Subcommittee Meeting, because I'm an M-PAC member to Metro. Mainly, we discussed our transportation solutions, of which there's very little money, but a lot of needs. And that was a, quite a busy week this week. Now, Mary, we can do the dog. "This is Zack, a sweet, loving puggle looking for his forever home. He is cute little guy who is part pug, part beetle, and all adorable. He will show you his pretty smile for treats and scratches. He loves to be around people and will happily climb into your home and lap. Come by and meet him today." For more information about Zack and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or go online to clackamas.us/dogs.
Is that it? You finishing with the dog?
I'm finishing with the dog.
All right. Well, I went to the Fair Board Meeting this last week. It's always great, 'cause Raylene, the president, cooks pie. And I can't eat any, 'cause Mary has me on this weight contest up here on the, all over the place. Actually, there's a ton of applicants for that. And, but it was great fun, and those people work really hard to bring a great fair to us every year. I mean, they get down to, you know, pig pens and shuttles and, you know, really, the bare bones of how these fairs go together, but it's great, hard-working people. Met with Corin Power, the city councillor in Milwaukee, who is the new chair of the Regional Wastewater Capacity Committee. And we're having a meeting on March 31st for that. The AOC, as was mentioned, went to Transportation Legislative and then the Board Meeting. But a lot of, in a lot of ways, AOC is licking their wounds after losing a lot of things in this short legislative session. If you recall, the short legislative session was passed by the voters with the full intent that it was supposed to be used just to trim things up, to correct a few things. And yet, some huge things passed this time, including the minimum wage, and the No Coal Fuel Act, and a whole bunch of things that are really gonna, I think, be very inflationary for the state. Met with the sheriff today. While I was in his parking lot, I got backed into, sitting in the car, taking a little time before I went in, bam, got nailed. So that was sad, but.
We both had an unlucky day that way.
You and I are in this together, Martha. But it's always great to meet the sheriff. And, you know, it's like Jim said before, statewide, we're considering, it's considered to have the best sheriff's department and resources that they, they deliver, so I'm real proud of them. I will also say that daylight savings happened this week, and it, I hated it. 'Cause, you know, I mean, I wish they'd just make up their mind. I, I'd settle for one way or another. Either way, just settle it, because it is very disquieting. It affects your sleep, and I, I don't like mornings anyway. But then to lose another hour, it did not make my day. I'll just say that. So I'll, I'll finish off with this. Forget, oh, no, I won't finish off, because Mary caught me again. Mary, I'd like to announce something. I'd like to announce the dates for the commissioners' 2016 town halls. The first scheduled town hall will be held later this month, on Wednesday, March 30th, at Riverside Elementary School in Oak Grove, beginning at 6:00. The street address is 16303 Southeast River Road. We hope you can join us. There will be no discussion of libraries or, or the Park Avenue redevelopment, okay? Just wanna announce that. The second town hall will be held at the Malala Library on Wednesday, June 15th. We'll also hold town halls Wednesday, August 3rd, the change from the previous announcement, by the way, in Westland, and one on Wednesday, October 5th, in Boring. So please save those dates on your calendars. We will let you know the venue for those as soon as we, they are reserved. So forget trying to walk a mile in my shoes. Try spending a day wandering around in my mind. Now, that'll give you something worth thinking about. Anyway, there being no further business before the commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.
Oh, that's scary. I don't know.
Go.